Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting in Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 8th. So if you are watching on Monday, June 8th, we welcome your call-ins at 769-1677. And for those of you who are watching on cable, let me remind you that through the good work over at PCTV, you also have the option of watching our Village Board Meetings as well as lots of other content on the web at PCTV76.org. So PCTV76.org is a new website that PCTV has up and running. Quite a remarkable thing that's going to provide live web streaming of our Village Board Meetings so that you can watch them wherever you are, whether you have cable or you don't. And you'll also be able to watch archive meetings as well as lots of other archives of PCTV content by calling it up on the web. So it's a great step forward and congratulations again to Shane McGaffey at PCTV for shepherding that project a big, big step forward. So we haven't had a televised meeting for a little bit of time because the last televised meeting would have occurred on Memorial Day, which was a great day in the Village of Pleasantville. For those of you who were not here, it always begins with a ceremony honoring the World War I dead at the monument in front of BRS, and then a parade down Bedford Road to Memorial Plaza, and then additional ceremonies at Memorial Plaza honoring the dead from World War II, from Korea, from Vietnam. And this year's ceremony was made extra special with a couple of new features, and one of them was that we always receive the assistance of the local Fancher Nickel American Legion Post led by Commander Bert Ruiz. And this year, the American Legion Post assisted in planning an additional speaker, which was Pleasantville resident Lou McKinney, who is a former captain in the United States Army and a World War II veteran. And Lou spoke to the group both eloquently and movingly. And I recommend to any who may have missed it to catch it. It's running right now this week on PCTV and also can be pulled up on PCTV's website at PCTV76.org. So it was a great event, a moving ceremony, and one that I think a lot of people miss because they're away, and I really wholeheartedly endorse your idea of going back to it because it harks back to a remarkable piece of history for the Village of Pleasantville and the stories of the people who left this town and did not come back. So, did anyone else have anything to report?
I just have to mention that it's the Fourth Annual Reflections Scholarship Benefit being held Friday, June 19th. And this is a new date. It's usually done prom weekend, which was this past weekend. But this year, it is Friday, June 19th, and it is the Reflections Scholarship, which is in memory of Tina Shayna Gambino. And I don't know, Shane's not at the camera, but I wanted to just show everybody. If you didn't get one of these, you don't have to get an invitation. They usually go out to the people that have donated or have gone to the event in the past. But this scholarship is given to a Pleasantville High School graduating senior, and it's a four-year scholarship in memory of Tina. And if you did not receive an invitation and would like to send a donation or are interested in going, you can email tinasreflections@al.com or call 747-4574. It's a wonderful, wonderful event, and it's a true celebration of life, and everybody should try to get there. It's really a great event.
Thank you. Also, to be reminded, the Farm Market is up and running. It's been going for two weekends now and will continue on through December. So Farm Market and Memorial Plaza every Saturday, starting up at 9:00, am I correct?
No, 8:00.
8:00 and running till about 1:00.
We haven't gotten that time straight once, but I think the email went out at 7:00.
That's what you're here for. I also wanted to report on a couple of other things we've been working on in Work Session and matters that have come up in the course of conversation and letters that we have received. We met last week in Work Session, and much of the time was spent meeting with the police chief. One of the things we're working on in addition to general police matters and discussions about way things operate and way they might operate better is the question of emergency planning. There is a document that is circulated annually among all the people who are involved in emergency planning, and we have suggested that it would be wise for us on an annual basis to convene all the people who are involved in that in the same room so everybody understands what their responsibilities would be. And the chief is going to be working on that, and we'll be having such a meeting hopefully by the end of the month. It involves the schools and the churches as well as the emergency responders so that in the event that some sort of crisis should occur in the village, we have places where there might be alternative shelter, places where school kids would be sheltered, et cetera. So that's a process that is ongoing and that we're going to try to do in a little more formal way annually. I also wanted to report that we spent some time talking to a couple of different people who are interested in the Old Rec Center, which is the former Village Library at the corner of Great Oak Lane and Bedford Road. As you may recall, we moved out of that facility where we used to have the Recreation Department about two years ago or a year and a half ago, and they're now camped out in quarters here on the third floor at Village Hall, and their programs are scattered around in various different places, including this building and Clinton Street Center. We did that because the Old Rec Center has a variety of infrastructure problems. We got a condition report on it. It looked like the restoration of that building for municipal purposes was going to be an expensive undertaking, and we sought bids through an open request for proposal process for people who might buy that building. The request for proposal required that whoever bought it would be responsible for maintaining its exterior in historic condition and restoring it to its original state. So at the time that we did that, which was about a year ago, we thought we had a buyer who intended to purchase it for a single-family home use, and we're well along with that deal when in the end, conditions changed and the deal fell through. So we're now in the circumstance of revisiting the question of what to do with the Rec Center, and we have pulled out the requests for proposals and are going to circulate that again. A couple of different bidders have expressed an interest in it as well, but we certainly are not going to take anybody's offer without understanding what might be offered by anybody else out there. So anybody who thinks they are interested or might know of someone who is interested in that should contact Patty Dwyer at Village Hall, 769-1940, and let her know that they're interested in seeing the RFP. Or if you know someone you think might be interested, we'd be happy to know about it to get that into as many hands as possible. The village is interested as its primary goal in finding somebody who could take that building and restore it and use it for use within the current zoning, which would permit a single-family home or a two-family residence. So those are the terms. The zoning is provided in the RFP package, so anybody who was interested could get a look at it and see what was involved. Given some of the discussions that have gone on, it remains possible the village might have to reconsider its plans overall, and we've issued this RFP or about to do so without any commitment to sell the building, simply a request for proposals, and we'll consider what comes in over the door. The other thing I wanted to report is there's been quite a bit of discussion on all sides about the Verizon Cable franchising issue, and Jonathan Cunningham and I met with, along with Patty Dwyer, with two Verizon representatives back in mid-May. I followed that meeting up with a detailed email and spreadsheet to them the day following, and we showed some substantial flexibility in the village's position on that and requested a prompt response. I was promised we'd get a response by the end of last week. That would have been pushing four weeks from the meeting, and no response was forthcoming. So I had a number of extended conversations today with the Verizon representatives, and the thrust of that discussion is as of today, Verizon is unable to tell us when they would be able to come back to us with a response to our request. So we are opening all avenues of discussion on that front, but the Verizon Regional Government Affairs person told me that the best she could say is that she doesn't know when they would even have a response. So it's a frustrating process. I feel strongly that getting Verizon into this community is imperative, that a competitive marketplace would benefit everybody, even those who intend to remain with Cablevision. But I will say certainly, speaking for myself, that it's a frustrating process, and I know it's been so for Jonathan, who's been at this game for quite a long time.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say that it's remarkable how consistent they are. Many of you have shared emails with me, and I've relayed over the last four months the exact same story. It's good that Peter got to see it firsthand for himself what a small community is up against with a corporation that, you know, seemingly has little vested interest in a small population while at the same time, we have a great deal of vested interest in how this franchise agreement comes off. So we'll see where we end up when they decide to grace us with some sort of response, if indeed, we end up with some sort of response.
We certainly have made clear to them that it's a remarkable circumstance where a corporation has essentially built the system, has a sunk capital cost that is generating very little revenue for them because they don't have a franchise. A smaller, nimbler entity, you would think, might actually camp somebody out here in the Village of Pleasantville who wouldn't come back until the switch was turned on. So we have made crystal clear to them that we are flexible, willing, open. We have said, "You tell us when and where we can find the decision-maker, and we're in the room." It's worth noting that thus far, our request to actually sit down with a Verizon decision-maker has been flatly refused. We are permitted to speak to the Government Affairs Representatives and also to the Gun for Hire Negotiator, who is a telecommunications attorney out of Boston, but both of them freely admit that they are conduits to quote-unquote "the business," and they are not decision-makers. So for reasons that remain unclear, the decision-makers are cloistered in the halls of Verizon. So bottom line is, don't misunderstand me. The Village of Pleasantville wants Verizon in this community. We want to sign a fair and reasonable contract, and we're ready to do it. So I do know that a number of community members have expressed their concern about this to Verizon, and I thank them for doing so. We'll be continuing to push this in an aggressive way, and it's taking altogether more of our time on the board than is justified, given the lack of response from Verizon. So we're pushing it. Couple of other things to report, and then we'll move on to the rest of the program. We met earlier this evening with Steve Johnson, who's the Superintendent of Public Works, and he updated us on summer paving plans. We will be repaving Ashland Avenue, Orchard, Booth Street to the Village Line, and past the Village Line, Mount Pleasant will pick up and pave the rest of it, as well as Sutton Place. Those streets are all due for repaving, and affected homeowners will get a letter indicating when it's going to happen. In addition, Steve is going to be renewing an anti-slip coating on the hill portion of Academy Street, Highview, Hillcrest, and Grandview. Those are all things on for the summer, so...
And Ashland, yes.
Ashland is a complete repave. If you've looked at all at Soldiers' and Sailors' Field, the work is continuing on a new, small building there that will provide bathrooms as well as a couple of storage areas, and we're optimistic that that project will be finished and complete by somewhere around the end of July. It's certainly ready for the fall sports. And we've had ongoing discussions about drainage and water project relating to Church Street, Green Meadow, Sutton Place, and the St. Jude's property, and we are continuing to look at that aggressively. And then lastly, those of you who are interested in the Church Street sidewalk question, we've received a lot of comment on that, both pro and con. And as I think most of you know, we hired a traffic consulting firm, Adler Consulting, and they have been out doing the site investigations that were required as part of the proposal. The traffic count devices have been out there as well, and we're hoping to get a response in the form of a letter report back from them within the next couple of weeks. Is that true, Patty? Give or take. So that's where we stand on all of that. Again, anybody who has comments or questions is welcome to call us if it's June 8th when you're watching, 769-1677. Anybody else? All right. No, we had a report about easement proposals behind Lucy's property.
Correct.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the board. Good evening.
It's a televised event, so...
Sorry, David.
I would have worn a different tie. Good evening. My name is David Cooper. I'm from the law firm of Zaren &amp; Steinmetz. I'm here to represent Lucy's Martini Lounge, also known as The Eyes of War. We're in the process, I don't know if the board is aware or not, we're in the process of applying for site plan approval to extend Lucy's, just for some patron space. In the midst of that application...
That extension, just for those who are watching, is in the area currently fenced in?
Correct. That's correct. It's, in terms of area, we're not asking for any variances for area.
Right. Again, just for the benefit of those who are watching, Lucy's Martini Bar is at the corner of Wheeler and Bedford, right opposite Village Hall, and it's a property that's privately-owned but is surrounded on two sides by the Village parking lot.
That's correct. And, you know, let me just make one clarification. We are seeking an area variance as to a setback, but this, a different setback than what I'm here for tonight. In the process of making the application, we found out that there is a 0.3-foot encumbrance, or not encumbrance, I'm sorry, encroachment on the village property, the existing Lucy's building. I have a survey, if the board would like to look at, so I can show you where we're looking at.
Sure. So the building itself is 0.3 feet over the side?
0.03 feet over the, yes.
And has been since time began?
Since, right, since we've built it.
Right.
Is that inches? Wouldn't it be? That's why we call it...
Four inches.
Yeah, it would be four inches, yeah.
That's why they made lawyers.
Maybe serving martinis back there.
I guess the easiest way the board can... I'm sorry, for the benefit of...
It's all right. We'll hold it up for Shane and...
Yes. It's four inches.
About four inches, yes, that's correct. This is the existing building here. This would be the proposed addition. The overage, if you can see, the thicker line here is actually the building. The thinner line is the property line. We are over a little bit in this area over here, as you can see.
So it's four inches in just a small area?
Yes, that's correct.
It's at a daggle. When was the building built?
You know, I don't have that information offhand.
Many years ago.
Yeah, it was before the current owner, which I think he took possession in the 90s.
And their property line ends at what shows as those parking spaces?
The property goes all the way over to here, yes. Yeah, this would be the proposed addition. I'll leave that there for you to take a look at.
Hold it up.
You can't even see it.
There's really nothing to see.
Right.
Four inches on a map like that is...
Four inches is essentially six feet.
I think that all village residents that are standing in that four inches get a discount.
Get a discount.
A 40% discount.
It's in the bathroom, by the way, now.
Okay.
I'm not sure. The other issue that we're here for, which actually makes us a lot more worthwhile, there is a retaining wall that's currently in the village property, which is, if you could see, here. This represents the retaining wall, which is currently, which exists right now, and then there's a planting area over here. This is all on village property, although it's actually being maintained by Lucy's right now. In order to...
Did the village build the retaining wall, did it?
I believe the village built the retaining wall. My clients have been maintaining it since they purchased the property, but it's on your property.
That's near the outdoor patio. That's the retaining wall on the other side of the outdoor patio.
Yes, it's correct. This would be the village lot, and then this is Wheeler and Bedford.
Okay.
You can almost see it out the window, actually.
And how many feet is that off the structure of the retaining wall?
It's about five feet or so.
About 0.6 feet.
Right. I can give you inches, right. The issue for us is that in order to build the proposed addition, we're going to need access, we're going to need to take the retaining wall down, at least temporarily, to get in on this side to build up the wall. Now, with the construction of the addition, and obviously, let me just say, this is all, of course, contingent on site plan approval and a small variance. So the reason why we're here tonight is just to introduce it, obviously, until we get the approvals, this part of the agreement is, you know, moot, or not moot, but premature. With the construction of the new addition, you're going to have a retaining wall on Lucy's property. And so the retaining wall that's existing, that's on the village property, is not necessary anymore. Lucy's is happy to rebuild it after taking it down or pave over it, whatever the village would want.
So we'd get a couple of extra feet.
Extra feet, correct. There'd be some more turning radius and potentially another spot or so.
Okay.
The way that the license agreement has been written, and it's in front of you right now, is it leaves it open. We're willing to do whatever the village would want. If you want us to put the retaining wall back up, we'd be happy to. If you'd like us to pave over it, we'd be happy to do that as well.
And there'd be no reason to put it back up? It serves no purpose, right?
Correct, correct. The way that the agreements would work is there'd be a temporary construction license agreement, so it's revocable on the village, if the village were to want to, for the construction, which would allow us to take down the retaining wall, give us about a 10-foot area from Lucy's property so that we can work in there, put up scaffolding, and, you know, do the construction activities, take it all down, take it out, and then, right now, it's left open, either put up the wall or pave over it. The license agreement also covers the 0.303-foot encroachment. That, of course, wouldn't be temporary, although since it's a license agreement, of course, it could be revoked upon the village whenever they want to, within 90 days' notice for my clients, so that we know that we would need to do something else with that sort of encroachment. But the purpose is really just to...
You don't have any options.
Well, you know, so be it. I mean, yes, we certainly would like it like an easement, but we've been talking with Joel Saxon, and he believes that a license agreement is better, I guess, in a better position for the village. For our purposes, what we just need to do, I guess, is clear title to make sure that there is something there that's in writing to say, look...
And is durable.
Right.
Okay.
All right. For my purposes tonight, really, and I don't think the decision can be made tonight, but just to, you know, would love to know what you would want us to do with the retaining wall so I can write that up, and then when and if and when we receive our approvals from the Planning Board and the ZBA...
Is this, back there, you're putting a kitchen back there so you could serve food? Is that what you're doing?
That's correct. We're putting in a small kitchen. The plan is to serve just dinner from about 4:00 PM on.
So the structure around that retaining wall, that's now an open patio, is going to be closed?
It would become a two-story, a three-story building.
A three-story building.
Addition, right.
And the offices are extended, then?
Not the offices. It's just going to be patron space.
Upstairs as well?
Yes, that's correct.
I see.
So you're going to be able to go and heat there?
Will there be windows on that side?
Window, on which side?
Of the apartment, what side?
There will be windows on that side, yes.
On both first and second floor?
I believe so, at this point, yes, yeah.
Just recognize that although there isn't anything on the boards at the moment, the village has at points considered the idea of some construction that might abut that building, so...
Except for that 0.03.
You're aware of that, right? That there are some sort of tentative plans, or at least we're looking into the idea of building something which would fit around that building.
Certainly. I mean, as an abut neighbor...
So they're putting up windows, they run the risk of having those windows looking out that...
Right, right.
Okay. So where are you in the process with planning and zoning?
We have had two meetings in front of planning. They referred us over to the zoning board because of, we have a slight rear yard variance that we need because the building is, the original building is actually slanted, which I think this is what's causing the 0.03 foot. The addition is also...
Before the days of laser...
Right. The addition, then, to make up for it, is also going to be slanted a little bit. It's going to be all on our property, so we won't have another, you know, overage, but it causes the rear yard to vary, and so you would need a variance for that. So we're in front of the zoning board later this month, I believe, and then we can go back to the planning board for site plan approval.
Okay, that's great. So we'll read this over. This is the first we've seen of the license agreement that we got today, but it all sounds, you know, in the end, the discussion with planning and zoning would be determinative about the process of this, but certainly pleased to think that Lucy's is doing well and would be looking to invest in our community.
That they're going to serve food finally.
Yes. Good food.
David, I have a quick question. Is there any discussion about landscaping the Wheeler Avenue side where there are some shrubs now that are really ratty-looking and...
Let me just...
As you walk down...
Wheeler is the...
It would be along the side of the new building, was currently along the side.
There won't be any room to.
Is it pumping out that far?
Well, the rear, the front yard there has to be either 0 or 6 feet. So because we're matching the building, it's got to be 0.
So then the new, the addition would follow the same line as the existing building?
Right, right. So at least, you know, you'll be able to, it'll look straight.
Okay, so that'll be cleaned up anyway.
Right, correct.
You know, I think we should bear in mind, as we think about that retaining wall on the piner back there, that when the train's empty, you see a lot of people who walk through that parking lot. It's not just a parking lot, it's sort of a pedestrian transit point, and, you know, good for Lucy's, and I'm a fan and everything. But, you know, the village is a lot of small points of visual beauty, and if we can even enhance, put some plants back there, or shrubs, or, you know, small trees, or something that, assuming we don't need the turning radius back there, and the police use that...
Well, that was my concern with the retaining area. I didn't know it was ours. If I did, we would have beautified it, you know? I didn't really know that that was on the Village property.
Well, I just, you know, we should be thinking about, thinking about the green areas in our village, and even small green areas like this, especially since people are walking through there. If you watch the trains get off at 6 o'clock, there are a lot of people who walk through there.
Now they won't be, they'll be going for dinner at Lucy's.
Yeah, well, that may be too. So anyway, I mean, I'm inclined to just, to be more favorable to...
Instead of making it a partner's space or an asshole's...
Paying it over, and I understand the practicality there, but...
I don't think you can make it, could you? It would be too small for...
We wouldn't get much out of it. I mean, it would make it easier, though. We do valet some cars there once in a while, you know, the police cars in particular, but it's rare, and I would rather have some visual impact than...
All right. So, I mean, we'll look at what our options are about the retaining wall, but thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Appreciate your assistance. Congratulations.
Thanks a lot, David.
Anybody else in the audience have anything they wanted to bring up?
Maybe.
Oh, Shane, yes. Shane had a report.
It'll just look like a parking lot.
Do you want to focus on your...
It's not worth it.
I just wanted to alert the public and the board. I think I've talked to most of you individually, but the school is obviously going under construction, and when Media One first put in the lines for the government channel, they actually ran it through the school. So from here, the signal is going to the Pleasantville High School, and from the Pleasantville High School, it's going to Austin. And you might have noticed that when the power in the high school goes off as they do construction projects, so do the high school, you know, the education channel and the government channel. And so I've been working with the school and Mary Fox Alter and Ed Dance, who runs the television station, to try and solve the problem, and we've been working with Cablevision, and it hasn't happened yet. We're working on it. But I just wanted to alert the public that you might be looking for the government channel over the summer or maybe in the fall. You won't be able to find it because it's not on the air, because the power's out or they've cut the line. So all I can say at this point is we're working on it, and that you can always find it at www.pctv76.org. I mean, all the meetings will be online, and hopefully, there won't be that much interruption. We understand the problem, but we're working on it.
So the interruptions don't affect the online streaming?
They do not.
Right.
They do not.
The new portal to the world, PCTV76.org.
But I just wanted everybody to be aware.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right. We, one of the things that we are looking to do is to have each of the various department heads come to Village Board Meetings periodically and report on what's going on and what's good, what's bad, what's exciting, what's not exciting. And Mike Testa, our Building Inspector, is our guest tonight.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome, Mike.
Mike's partner.
How's everyone?
Good.
I previously handed out two sets of talking points, and I don't know if you have any preference. First one is a...
As you wish.
Current projects within the village, and the other is more of a zoning comments on our proposed downtown improvements to the zoning ordinance. I'd like to just go through a series of talking points with regards to some of the current projects that we have going on in our village, and just to give you an update going on in our village and just to give you an update on these and what we'll do is we'll just start going through them. First Frank Madonna property, which is over on 201, 501 Marble Avenue. That's right on the end of the village line going out toward Thornwood. That's the bank and the parking lot improvements that were recently approved by the planning commission in the town of Mount Pleasant. You see, the, the new building is currently just about completed. Parking lot's getting ready to be curbed out and that should be occupied very shortly. It's an expansion that is, was involving both our town and the town of Mount Pleasant and it's going to be, this parking lot will serve both, both the village and the town. So it's a nice little improvement. We're going to have a couple of empty tenant spaces right there that are going to be looking for tenants. One was a proposal for a, sort of like a pizzeria type occupancy, but I don't know if that went through. And the other was for a, more of a sports store. That was, I talked about with the guy today, so that'd be one of the first sports stores we've had in the lot.
And then the, the bank will be Hudson Valley Bank moving out of it adjacent to the building?
That is correct. That's in the town of Mount Pleasant actually located.
Does the old Hudson Valley Bank building come down?
Uh-
Or is that separate from it?
That is separate in-
I see, okay.
Okay. The other was Princeton Realty Group, which is 24 Marble Avenue. If you notice, the convenience store and gas station over there on a corner, Marble and Hobby is just, hasn't been completed. It's, did a real nice job and I think it's an asset to our community. The architecture review board got involved with a lot of the little nuances in the building and we see a really nice improvement to a corner in the village, which is something I think was long overdue for that particular site. Currently, we just got approved by the planning commission is Solman and Esma Palvic. They own 10 Marble Avenue. It's the owner of Euro Spa, Paul, and he just got a wine bar approved on a corner where the old antique store used to be. So that is recently-
So that's the space that's right adjacent to the Jean Jacques parking lot?
That is correct. It's that little vacant space there and it's going to be a new wine bar. It's going to not serve any, no kitchen at all in the establishment, but there will be wine and cheeses and things of that nature and it has secured all its approvals. Working on the construction permits right now.
Great.
So that should be up and running very shortly. Lucy's Lounge was just talked about by, did Mr. Cooper and as he correctly stated his points, they are approved on a conceptual basis by the planning commission who sent them onto the ZBA and they're trying to secure some minor variances and they'll be back for final site plan approval. So that's going to be an interesting little building with, it expands the current use of the facility to both the second floor and to a little gathering place on the third level, which is in a glass enclosure. So it's a, architecturally, it's a neat, a neat little area. Pharaoh Service Station, they are currently before the board for propane exchange facility. That's the gas station on a corner of Manville. Evidently, it appears that propane appears to be a very big money-making little sidebar and as a result, three of the gas stations are going to be coming to our planning commissions for trying to request a special use permit to allow outdoor storage of propane canister swaps with us.
You bring your can, the tempe and pick up one that's-
You bring your canister, you swap it out and they, they change it over.
How much physical space does that take?
I would say it's maybe about six feet by three feet at the most.
Just a cabinet?
Yeah, they keep about twenty canisters in a container area.
And what are the guidelines? Are they, does it have to be-
There's minimum separation requirements for window openings, door openings and property lines and they all meet the standard.
Mike, one, one issue, just having read a screen about Pharaohs, and they certainly continue to be as they have always been, a public-spirited neighbor and much appreciated. I do notice that we end up with cars that are parked encroaching over almost into the sidewalk as you depart the, the parking lot.
That is correct.
Foster and sometimes it gets a little too far for comfort.
We've brought that issue up with Ed Elliott, who is the architect for Pharaoh's with the planning commission and under the site plan review, we've actually delineated areas so where the parking is actually going to be. And a lot of it's stacked parking, which they come and pick their vehicles up, but we want to line it out this time, which we didn't have lined out where the maximum extents are. So hopefully we'll see an improvement with that.
That'd be great.
Recently, we just approved the Mitchell's Taekwondo Academy, which is up on 70 Memorial Plaza. That's in back of the post office there up on the hill. So it's a-
Is that the site of the former Gulbenkian Beach Store?
That is correct.
Okay, that's up on the rock?
Yes, up on top of the hill. And so that's our new karate studio. So that's under construction right now.
Did they took the whole space or did-
They took just one of the, a portion of the floor space. So it's about maybe a couple thousand square feet. So it's going to be a nice place for, mainly catering to young children. Mr. Vilani on 475 Befford Road, if you don't know, he's, is open now as a new pizzeria. So he's doing quite well. Spoke to him today and-
Is that the Burke Oven?
That's the Burke Oven Pizza right on the side here down on Befford and he's also going to be coming in to try to put a little, a couple seats outside too. So he seems to be doing quite well, mainly catering to Pace University.
Is there room there for seats?
I think two or three could probably fit in there.
Test, you guys find plenty of rooms to sit up there.
That's right. Mr. and Mrs. Charles Dewey, Befford Road, that subdivision has been approved and the beginnings of the roadway have been put in. It's a new two-lot subdivision that we have on the corner of Oak Hill and Befford Road. There was an existing house there that they knocked down as part of the agreement with the planning commission. So you're going to see-
This is out past Foxwood towards Chappaqua?
Past Foxwood on the right-hand side, right before Chappaqua. And what you're going to have is two new houses. They're going to be going up on a corner there. So that's, he doesn't have any prospective buyers. He's really not marketing it right now, but that will be at least approved. The, the maps are filed with the county, so he's ready to go.
He intends to sell the lots or build on them?
Not quite sure yet. He may want to retain one for his family and build on the other. Pleasantville Estates, which is C V Pierce, I don't know if you've gone there, but in the last couple of days, we're starting to have activity. Finally, after about a year and a half, we got financing for the site. Steve Johnson met with the supervisor of the facility the other, last week. I'm meeting with them tomorrow with regards to the architect. We're going to start a model unit very shortly.
So these are the six houses that are on Befford Road just past Pierce?
On the left-hand side. It used to be called the old C V Pierce property. It's called Pleasant Village Estates. It's six lots totally within the village and comprised about a half acre apiece approximately.
And the plan is to build one house as a model?
One house as a model and clean up the site. And what you see now going on is you got big equipment in there. We're going to start cleaning up the site, bulldozing everything, cleaning up the site, which was pretty unkept for quite a while.
That much space there for half an acre for six?
Sure. It's a big, it's like almost four acres just about. It's a big site, Mindy.
And there's no more pollution?
No, it was mitigated. We had a, it was probably one of the longest approvals before the Pleasantville Village Planning Commission.
Yeah, it was, when I was up there, it was going on.
Two years actually it was.
Really?
There was mitigation plan that was approved by the planning commission. We're a series of experts and those, that plan has been implemented on-site. It involved about a two-foot capping and for the most part, we've capped the entire site, fresh fill, and that's was what we needed to get done. So mainly it's a big cleanup right now and hopefully you'll see a big improvement in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
Two Broadway Bar and Restaurant, it used to be the old Stray, but has now changed hands. It's called Two Broadway and two young gentlemen from Mount Kiskel have opened that up and hopefully they'll do quite well.
They need their liquor license.
Yeah, they're waiting on that, so I don't know the status on it.
The restaurant itself is, is open for business as I understand.
It is open for business right now.
You can't even BYOB anymore. New York state law doesn't even allow you. If you don't, if they don't have a liquor license, you can't. Don't ask me why I know all this.
I was just going to say.
A resident expert.
Your dog's name is Booser.
Mindy's our liaison to the-
Emerson Booser, okay?
Jacob Burns Film Center, 405 Manville. If you notice, the scaffolding has finally come down.
Thank God, it looks great.
And we are, the next two weeks, we're going to start doing the planting. So you're going to see a big improvement on, on the corner when the plantings go in. That is scheduled to be put in as well as removal of all this construction equipment in the rear. So finally, it's basically completed and you're going to see a nice little corner in about two weeks there when that planting gets installed. Joseph Appolito, 98 Washington Avenue, which is the building that is sitting vacant over there. Just kind of a status update on that building. Right now, the gentleman who owns it and his partners are trying, are in financial difficulty right now. They've had some issues that they have to try to resolve. We're trying to secure additional loans for the property, but I believe they are underway in trying to get that done. When they do finally get them resolved, there's going to be seven units up there, seven new apartments, some office space and some, maybe some retail on the first floor as well as a bank.
So now I noticed, Mike, this again for people who haven't focused on is on the, on Washington Avenue near Lucio's. The Trusco Bank sign that was up is now gone.
That is correct. Trusco was lost as a tenancy.
I see.
At least to my knowledge. My understanding is they, they actually, they built it out almost 95% and then from my understanding, they just had to open up on certain deadlines. The owner couldn't provide the deadlines and as a result, they withdrew their application.
So is there quite a bit of work still to be done before it's-
Yeah, there's, there's a series of issues that have to be resolved in terms of some, some are major, some are minor with regards to some code issues with my department and those things have to be resolved before anything goes further on. And they, they're aware of it. We're meeting with the engineers and the architects. A series of architects were hired and fired and rehired again as diff, as new names and things of that nature. So we have all new players involved in the whole process.
So it's clearly some months before that building is occupied?
Yes, months.
Mike, what's happening with the, the utility pole in front of that building? It's at about eighty degrees of-
Utility pole is going to stay.
At that angle?
At that angle, it's going to be supported and according to the utility company, that is a safe condition. Planning commission would love to see that removed, but again, it's, it's a major undertaking to remove that pole and to redo the whole poles on Washington Avenue. So at this stage though, it's staying right.
And, but attempts were made to, to straighten it up?
Not, not to straighten it, to stabilize it.
You know, it just looks horrible, doesn't it?
It really does.
If you look at that building, it just looks horrible. It looks, it makes our downtown look like-
It's a main supporting pole and it needs to be beefed up totally.
Is that Carnet's pole or Verizon's pole or was it?
I believe it's Verizon's, yeah.
Hmm.
Continue on Sarls Lane Warehouse. Sarls Lane Warehouse, which is Triumph Development Corporation up on Sarls Lane. We have a new six-lot subdivision. Four of the lots are in the village of Pleasantville, two are in the town of Mount Pleasant. The planning commission for the village has recently approved the subdivision. They sent it on now to the town of Mount Pleasant. So our, our part of the plan has been signed off by the chairman and we're waiting on the town chairman to sign off on that. There's some bond issues that the town wants because the majority of the utilities are actually in the town up, above first, extending the sewer district up there and, and that's the biggest problem he has right now.
Is it still-
Six lots, two in the town, four in the village.
It's going to be residential?
Residential, yeah. And one of the unique factors of the one lot, the first lot in the village is going to be the old warehouse, a portion of it. Then they knocked down the majority of the warehouse. They're going to now retrofit a portion of it to be a new single-family house.
So they are, that, that last piece of the warehouse will remain?
The majority of, that what you see there now will remain. It'll be, some of it will be backfilled, some will be used as retaining walls, but-
And the neighbors were concerned at one point about the site and its safety. That-
That was resolved and it was all basically graded and seeded and some erosion protection and some fencing around the Lynch property, which was the house that was demolished.
Looks like an ancient ruin when you go by that.
It's old. It's pretty, it's probably two and a half, three-foot thick stone. It's an amazing building.
So the neighbors are okay with all of that?
Well, the majority of the neighbors were in attendance at the public hearing and they had a series of concerns, which we addressed. And I think for the most part, at the end of the day, everyone was happy up there.
Great.
Giorgio subdivision up on Skytop. You have two lots going up there right now. The one module was recently installed about two and a half weeks ago and it's just about completed right now. The second one will be underway shortly, at least the foundation will. And you start, so we get some backfilling done so we could get that completed before the inclement weather. Sandy and Wellalasa, which is basically across the street, also on Skytop, is a new two-lot subdivision. They're proposed to knock an existing house down and propose two new, brand-new houses. So that has been approved by the board, filed with the county and we're ready to go, but no, but no buyers on the lots. That's the biggest problem we have.
And it will await buyers before-
That is correct. The lots have been approved by the architecture review board, at least one has, and they have a certain style of house that needs to be built, but-
Does that mean-
Well, because of the fact that it steps into the hillside on uphill side, there was some uniqueness to the site and the, and the slopes on the driveways and how it would be molded into the, into the surrounding property. So that was a big concern of the planning commission and the ARB and they had to adhere to certain percentage of grades and things like that.
Okay.
Going down the list here, Dave Sims, which is on Gaiyan Street, that's currently before the planning commission. They got preliminary plot approval about two meetings ago. They're coming back hopefully on the 24th of this month for final subdivision plot approval for a new single-family lot. One of the conditions is that the planning commission, if they approve it, it's going to then come back to your board. So you, you should be expecting this shortly with regards to that original agreement and the deed restriction back in the early 50s. It's kind of a formality, but under the way the deed is written, it has to get approval from the board of trustees after it gets approval from the planning commission. So it will be back, because it was sold to that owner by the village years ago.
This is, this is the, the lot where there was an issue about this, the-
Side and the pool and-
Yes, yeah. I believe Howard Zane was here talking about the board.
And that Seco had passed all of that?
Yes, we have approved it. The planning commission has approved it. There's a whole series of construction plans that are approved by their engineer. On-site retention-
Because he stated, he stated that there were some inconsistencies in the filing of that Seco.
I believe that those inconsistencies, if there were any, were totally corrected by the applicant's engineer and to our satisfaction, as well as the planning consultant for the village. Shirley De Pace on 109, 147 Wheeler, I don't know if you've driven by Tompkins, you see a new enclosure that was done.
Much nicer.
As a request by the planning commission to try to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighbors. And I think it's a step in the right direction. The next step is to try to organize some of this material from the construction site inside now. The whiff and electric is out of there now. We're, the majority of the junk is whiff and electric, so we're trying to get that out. So-
They've departed as a tenant?
They've departed and we got a plumbing contractor there now.
Okay.
Dennis Santucci is contracting corporation is a gentleman who's involved in purchasing 112 Befford Road, which is the old building house in the old village, the blue house, the vacant house up there. Both Mr. Building and his wife has, have passed away as well as the estate executor who was running the estate. So now we're left with the daughter who's trying to resolve this with Mr. Santucci. Mr. Santucci secured zoning variances as well as architectural review board approval for a new single-family house and tear down the existing house. So we're just waiting on that transaction to occur.
Although-
He's ready to go.
Are we approaching the point at which those variances would expire?
He went, came back for an extension. He secured the extension.
Is that in the special character?
That is in the special character. That was why he had to go before the ARB.
And so the house that he's proposing is-
It's, it's going to be a nice house. It's a cute little house. The board of architecture review was very concerned on how it would blend in with the surrounding houses and was actually elongated and tweaked to an angle to try to accommodate the adjacent neighbors.
So it might have a front porch? It might-
I believe there is a small wrap porch on it. Cass Realty is currently before the planning and zoning commission. It's a unique little issue we have at 21 Palding Street back in the early 60s. They evidently had a single, a single-floor warehouse facility. It's the old Carquest. And what they did was it was a very tall, one-story building. Somewhere in the 60s, they actually put another floor in the building without permits and without any approvals since the early 60s. So they're trying to sell it now and, you know, we're digging into the records as they go to sell and find out that this thing has zero permits and zero approvals. So now they're before our boards. Where it's involving the variance boards, it's involving New York state code waivers because there's no handicapped accessibility. They have to put in an elevator and modify the stairway. So he's got his work cut out for him, but-
Is that, or he takes out the floor?
That is the option. Foxwood Condominiums, Foxwood 3. The eight units that were damaged by the fire are, for the most part, have been totally rebuilt and framed. The outside, for the most part, if you've taken a ride over there, is, is basically complete. The interiors are still gutted. We're working on the studding, the plumbing and everything else. We went for a frame inspection, a plumbing inspection. The biggest issue we had right now was with regards to the fact that because they burnt down, at the time they were built in 1974, they didn't require handicapped accessibility. Now these type of units, four or more, do require ADA accessibility and as a result, they had to put ramps to the first floor, four units. And that was a big issue with the surrounding owners and also the current owners of the buildings who didn't want ramps because some of them go by bedroom windows and things of that nature. So we had about three series of meetings with the architecture review board to try to come up with some compromises. The last meeting that they did have, they did actually have an addendum that it appears to be an approval that everybody seems to be able to live with and that is under construction right now.
Do you have any sense for when those, when those tenants will be able to reoccupy?
Insulation and plumbing and gas and sprinklers are on the way right now. I would say three months, if I were to take a guess. Three months.
Happy to see progress there. Just an awful thing for those-
It's terrible. Flun and Sour Bakery, Flower and Sour, Sun Bakery has been opened up on Washington. I don't know if you've had a chance to get there.
Best companies.
They're doing quite well from what I understand, mainly in the form of catering. So that seems to be your big forte is catering. Patain's Auto Body, 59 Marble is a big item of discussion with regards to a possible sale and there are some possible tendencies that are underway sales, and there are some possible tendencies that are underway right now. We're just waiting on some confirmations and some signage contracts that.
Where is that one again?
That's on the corner of Palding Street and Marble.
Okay.
Roughly diagonally opposite the football field.
The ball field, yeah.
So that would be a great development to have a, some new redevelopment going on.
Yeah, and I think that there are some people that are really very interested in it that hopefully you'll see that very shortly.
Good.
New York City Department of Environmental Protection is, has some applications on improvements to the alum plant off of Broadway, but that's going to involve is an expansion to the alum plant itself to.
Who knew we had an alum plant, you know?
And just for the members of the public, alum, it's basically a coagulant that they pump into the water that takes the turbidity out of the water and takes the cloudiness out of the water.
Is that the same as ozinization, Mindy?
It's very close, I'm telling you.
It could be.
Tomorrow.
Yes, we'll find out, Jonathan, tomorrow.
I wouldn't ask that question.
You ask that question.
Where's the alum plant?
It's right off of Broadway, right next to the cemetery.
On the avenue, okay.
And.
You can now see because the coned doesn't cut down all the trees that were.
And what you're going to see is, if this does go through, it's got to go through the Planning Commission for a wetlands approval and site plan. It's a small expansion to house an office for a staff member there, as well as a bathroom and illumination of the septic system and pumping system into our sewers on Broadway, which is going to involve a minor easement from some of the neighbors, which is one of the big holdups right now, they're trying to work out some easements with neighbors.
You know, I just have to say, maybe this was covered before I was on the board, but you know, the cutting of the greenery up there is just an abomination in the village. I understand they had to clear that out, some of that out, but.
Well, some of it.
But it just seems to me, if they're looking to the village of Pleasantville, this is where my small site's coming up, if they're looking for something in the village, it seems that we could require some kind of screening.
Well, part of the approval is a series of brand-new plantings along Broadway.
Really?
So that is on the proposed site plan, Brian, so that is part of it. But I don't think they're two of the same.
No, it wasn't.
The DEP did do the cutting.
Right.
DEP is independent.
Coned is, yeah.
Yeah, so there are two different agencies.
The neighbors did come in here.
So when are those greening?
Well, we haven't gotten approval yet, it hasn't been before any of the boards yet, but it's just on my desk informally.
Okay, I made a note to comment about coned and trees after you've done your thing.
25 Jackson Wheeler, that has, the tenant that was in there has basically gone, and it's vacated right now and gutted. There are some potential tendencies that are just talking to my office, nobody has signed anything on the dotted line, but more than likely it may be another food establishment, we're not quite sure yet. And I guess hopefully we'll know that answer shortly.
Well, certainly good to hear that there's interest in the empty spaces.
Yes, there is, yeah, there is a series of people that are interested. New York State DEP is going to do a neat little project up on Nantahagan Stream Bed Improvements, which is located.
Lake Street.
By Lake Street area, and what they're going to be doing is, the old, what has happened over the years is some of the, the stream that was higher up has worked its way down because of gravity, I guess, and is now washing into the aqueduct. And what they're going to be doing is now going to be bringing that stream back to its original stream bed location, that was in the early 1900s, and it's still in the environmental review stage with their environmental experts right now on how they're going to accomplish that, but it's going to be a nice little project, involves about a quarter-mile of stream relocation.
Where is the new?
Above Nantahagan, above the pond?
Above the pond, yes.
And that's not part of, that's just another stream, it's not anything to do with sawmill or river?
That is, it's, it may be a minor tributary, but it's going to definitely require all kinds of wetlands and things of that nature, and it's going to be involved agencies and secret review.
What's the point of this?
Because the stream is working its way into the aqueduct and starting to erode the berm on the aqueduct.
Oh, I see.
So they're going to relocate it back about another 100 feet so that it just bypasses.
Another 100 feet into the, obviously into the woods.
Higher up, higher up.
But it still has to flow down.
It'll still follow, but it'll work its way down its normal channel.
And I'm sure they're paying attention to siltation, we.
That is going to be a big thing.
We emptied that pond, it was great expense to the village, all we need is to have more silt.
Let me tell you, it's really, it's filling up already, it's, you've seen.
Mike, is it yet clear what the impact is to us in terms of heavy equipment and how it gets in and all of that?
That's the big issue on how that actually does occur. Right now, I believe they're going to come up through the town of Mount Pleasant, but again, it's not 100% clear, and one of those issues on pre-construction and construction staging is going to have, they're going to have to tell us how they're going to do that because one of it involves a tracking over the aqueduct, which is for heavy equipment, which is some major loads going over the aqueduct, which we're concerned about. But again, it's their aqueduct, so obviously they're more concerned than us. So we don't know the answers yet, but soon as they review this with their environmental consultants, they'll be back before us. I assume they're trying to maybe get going in October when it's pretty dry.
When they mow it.
Yeah.
Right now, it's like five feet high.
Mike, I mean, is this something we should be looking at? Should we be gauging the level of silt? You know, we have that, remember, were you part of how that Nantahagan Pond was constructed?
I dove in it about my first week on the job and.
Dove into it?
They told me there was a bucket down in the dam, and I was a diver at the time, and I said, boy, this is a great opportunity to show my skills. I jumped in there with Mr. Pete Mallory, and I don't know if you know Pete, and we dug down about five foot of silt, and there was no bucket in the bottom, so it was just plugged with silt.
But, but there's a siltation.
There's a trap.
Trap.
That is correct.
And I wonder, you know, if we should take a look at how that siltation trap looks at this point, so that, you know, I'm sure DEP is looking at this and everything, but I would, I really hate after the kind of money we spent to clear out that pond, to have it sort of redone and then here we are.
What you need to do, Brian, is to do soundings, underwater soundings, to get the current level of the muck, and you know, from the top of surface to where you hit the level, and you could, and then you could compare it to what was actually done back then when they actually mucked it out.
So is our siltation trap working? I mean, did that?
There are two.
Is that a good idea that didn't pan out?
I mean, I can't answer that because I don't know what to compare it to, but I don't think we've had any trouble.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't had any trouble yet, but again, obviously there very well could be muck, silt on heavy rainy days that come into the pond that could lessen the depth of the pond.
Yeah, I'm worried about that.
Yeah, I am too, it really looks not good to me in that respect. Do you still dive, you want to go down there and find out how much silt we have?
I'll pass on that. Soldiers and Sailors Fieldhouse, Steve briefly touched on it, the blocks are going up, we inspected the plumbing last week, the underground plumbing, so for the most part, in the next month or so, you should see, for the most part, all of the walls up and the buildings start to be framed, so it's exciting, it's moving along right on time.
So again, just for those who are chiming, tuning in late, we will by the end of July or thereabouts have, for the first time in a very long time, functioning bathrooms at Soldier and Sailor.
We should, we should. Recreation Center, I met with Kevin Miley last week to go over, at your request, a possible winterization plan that we should follow and recommendations for the building to see what we should do. We went up there, there was a severe amount of water in the basement, probably about two to three inches of water in the basement level in the one side as you walk into the left, and that concerned me. Mildew was evident there, and what we need to do is figure out, what do we, do we winterize it during the winter or keep heat in the building to prevent any further, but the problem is, in order to do that, we abandoned the oil tank of the building, so we're going to have to put in a temporary oil tank if we do that, and re-hook up a new oil supply. We put in the new prefabricated chimney flue and took down the old chimney about a year and a half ago, and so we are ready to provide heat if we have to, other than the oil supply, but we need to know in advance and budget it for that in advance prior to the inclement weather.
Why don't we get a sub pump in there, just?
Yeah, where's the water coming from?
Water is coming through the foundation.
But it's drainage, right, did we solve that or we thought we did, right?
No, we did not solve it.
We didn't, we didn't put leaders on there and?
No, it's coming right through the foundation walls and just coming through.
But that can be, that.
It could be mitigated, I mean, it's done all the time by a gentleman, you know, you have to, it's a project to get a basement waterproofing gentleman to come in.
The downspouts are working and everything works?
Downspouts appear to be working, it's just, it needs a lot of TLC, and the report that Kevin did previously kind of details and outlines what needs to be done there.
Will Kevin let us know in addition to his report about how to protect it against damage in the winter?
Yes.
Whether it has deteriorated in any significant way since his last observations?
That was his goal.
Okay.
And he said he'd probably be about two weeks to get that report to us.
So just again, for those who are watching, Kevin Miley's a building inspector and engineer who did a very detailed condition report for us and an impressive job about two years ago on the, on the old rec center, and Mike, as he just mentioned, was back working with him, because since it appears that we will continue to own it, at least for the near term, we're anxious to make sure that some of the conditions that are obviously problems are either dealt with or are confirmed not to be problems that are getting worse.
The next phase of my proposal is to basically go over a series of zoning comments that I did for trustee Lopez with regards to the Central Business District and Associated Zoning Comments for the Village Municipal Zoning Law, and request for just to pick out some trouble issues that I felt were troubling as a department in the current zoning so that we could highlight them, and if you wish, I'll just kind of go through these.
Sure, just buzz through them, I think we can do them pretty quickly.
Okay, basically, we have a section 185 through DAD, which was pertaining to front yard parking, and it's really a nightmare the way it's written. It needs to be clarified as the way it is written, we need to verify whether or not we even want to have it in existence in the zoning, and to come up with the intent of what the board wants now. In other words, at the time, it sounded like a good thing, but I think in retrospect, there are certain circumstances that may, you may want to enable the boards, the Planning Commission or my office, to grant exceptions to this particular provision and don't interpret it so literally. Definitions of structures, wall heights, we have a lot of variance applications, be, over the years, numerous, numerous walls were built in the Village of Pleasantville, and these walls have started to fail now over the last 30, 40 years, and what happens is, any wall that's over three feet in height is defined as a structure under our zoning law, and what happened is, a couple walls of three, four, or five feet tall, they fall down, they're not allowed to be rebuilt because the majority of them are right on the property line, you have to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and get a waiver to be put back to the setback or to get a ZBA waiver from that relief, and it would make my life a lot easier, as well as some of the residents of the village who have these walls that are deteriorating, to maybe modify that three foot to a reasonable number. The number is, don't know yet what you want, three, four, or five feet, it depends, but it certainly makes sense because, you know, the walls, and most of these were old retaining walls, timber walls, just don't last forever, they, you know, their useful life is 10 to 20 years, and that's what we're seeing a lot of right now. Additional pictorial diagrams located in the rear of the zoning book, I think, is a major asset to the residents of the village when they look through these books and to anyone designing projects in the village. You know, picture is worth a thousand words, and we could just expand on our pictorials in the back, and it would greatly help.
Where would you pull the pictorials from?
We created them last time, working with F.P. Clark Associates, so it's just a matter of focusing on what ones we have to do and just adding to them. Redefined fence heights, and one of the biggest problems is, for example, if you have a retaining wall and you have a property that, here's the property, and then you have a drop to the neighbor's property, and you put a four-foot fence on top of this wall, on your property, it's eight foot, or on the neighbor's property, it's eight foot tall, on this guy's, it's only four feet, so what do you call the height, the eight foot or the four foot? It's kind of unclear, you know, if the neighbor doesn't want to look at an eight-foot fence, but the other neighbor doesn't want nothing where the children could fall off.
Right.
So it becomes a, how it's interpreted, and I think we should define on what we're looking for as a village. 185-7F is one of the biggest issues we have that is problematic, and that's particularly, that's the so-called merger provision in our zoning ordinance, we, according to council, and we've received three different opinions on how this is interpreted, we do not have a merger provision, but there are provisions in the zoning law which make development on lots that are in common ownership difficult, and we need to determine what does the actual law say and how it should be applied legally.
Like shared driveways and things?
No, it's if you own two lots and it's in, it's not in one name and another name, maybe it'll be in both your and your husband's name, for example, though that lot may be encumbered and you may need to use the entire lot versus sell that off independently. A lot of people have lots that they are used as nest eggs, and they thought they could build on and they can't build on, so it's something we should review. 185-7G concerning street frontage, totally needs to be explained in the law, it's unreadable and it's very difficult to apply. Accessory structures, we usually, for example, detached garage or shed, typically, we originally had a 10-foot setback, we modified that setback to three feet, but one of the problems is, it conflicts with the New York State Building Code, which has a mandatory requirement that anything within a four foot of a property line has to be non-combustible construction. So what that means is you can't build a wood-framed garage at three feet. The existing ones become pre-existing non-conforming, they could forever stay, but any new person building a garage, and you kind of want to tuck your garages or your detached structures in a corner of your property, you may want to make it four feet, which is consistent with the state. Zoning issues, one of the biggest problems we have is coverages, and the Board of Trustees is going to be wrestling probably with this when the committee comes back to them with what we want to see as coverages in the village on all our residential districts. The question is, do you want to allow people to maximize and build out smaller parcels and not have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals? By modifying the coverage criteria, we could just allow the coverage to be increased, and it would eliminate the need for numerous variances. For example, the smaller R1 zones, Orchard, Guyon, all those streets there, those are 20%, but again, if you were allowed to have 25% or whatever the number may be, it would allow people to expand but not have to get variances for coverage, at least on a minimum. And I don't know if we want to head that direction, the board was concerned, the zoning board was concerned about approving multiple variances for coverages, issues for like McMansion-type, what they call McMansions, but, and it would eliminate one of the variances that the ZBA would have to deal with. So it's something that we need to consider where we want to go as a direction. I don't know that yet on how you feel on that. Most municipalities allow three stories of wood-framed construction, the village currently limits it to two and a half stories. The state building code also allows three stories of wood-framed construction, and it may be time if you want to consider allowing three-story wood-framed structures.
Three-story require sprinklers now?
Yes, mandatory.
And so, I mean, the many older streets that have three-story homes already are grandfathered?
Those, any existing structure would be grandfathered, but if they wanted to add another story onto their house, it would, it would trigger probably the sprinkler criteria, depending on the.
And two and a half stories ends up as a?
Two stories plus a peaked roof versus.
An inhabited attic?
It could be used for habitation, yes, meeting standards, but it would, now if we went three stories, it'd allow you to go basically one, two, three, and then a slope roof.
I understand.
That's not three and a half?
Well, again, depending on how we want to.
How you define it.
I think I later had a question on half-story, but depending on how we want to do with this. Swimming pool enclosures, again, the goal of the swimming pool criteria in most of the residential districts so that people would use our village pool. It's a very strict standard, and I think that the standard has held up quite well over the years, and a lot of, some of the board members on the committee feel it should be changed. I personally think it should be left alone. It's a good law, it's strict.
What is the law?
20,000 square foot minimum lot area, so it basically states that, you know, most of the people on 75 by 100-foot lots can't put a pool in, and, but again, a lot of people have come, went to the zoning board stating that, you know, it restricts it to bigger lots, which is accurate, that's what the goal was at the time, but it seems to have worked quite well.
It's a lot of noise, that's really.
Well, that's the big issue with the neighbors and, you know, splashing and back and forth.
Right.
Have many people wanted to build pools and not been permitted to?
Yes, probably eight or 10 in the last couple of years.
I'll tell you, I, one behind me, and it's the loudest thing I've ever heard in my life, I just.
One of the biggest issues we have is 185-46C2, that's on the non-conforming section of the law. That's the single most problematic section of the zoning I have as a department. What that basically says is that any pre-existing non-conforming structure with regards to setbacks, height, or anything of that nature, cannot be expanded without getting a zoning variance. So if you have a building line that you require eight foot on one side and say you're seven, and you want to continue the same line as your house, you're not allowed to because of the fact that this section prohibits you from expanding that line of non-conformity. And I think we need to really look long and hard as to what you, it sends basically everyone to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Almost every other application goes to the ZBA here, and it could be eliminated by just some minor tweaking of that language to allow certain, certain current building lines to be maintained, if that's what the board wants. Again, we need to go through all the pros and cons when we make a submission to your board.
Mike, when you give us this stuff, can you give us just a rough estimate of what the ZBA typically does when it's confronted with these? I mean, does it grant most of these variances?
I could say that the zoning board on a whole, for the most part, grants the majority of variances that are before its board. However, I want to preface that, they don't, they're usually granted with conditions and stipulations and modified requests, in other words, the zoning board will ask them to go back, rethink certain things, and modify the proposal in some way that makes it better in one way, and to allow what you see to occur, so it's not just.
And in regards to, say, 185-46C?
Yes.
So you've got a non-conforming structure that they want to add on to?
Yes.
Does the ZBA let that happen?
Yes, in majority of the cases, but again, I press, it goes with, with other conditions that they implement on it to be, to, with the balancing test that's required under the law in front of the ZBA, they require some kind of mitigation to impact surrounding neighbors, tree buffering and things of that nature.
Gotcha, okay.
185-40 is, it's a section in the law that allows the building inspector to allow change of uses to occur. I'll give you a prime example of that, Dunkin' Donuts. This is a section that allowed that to occur when you have a current facility that has existing in A1 zone, A2 and B1 zone, I believe is the way it's worded. If there's no change in intensity with regards to parking on the site under the current zoning law, the way it's laid out, it allows the building inspector to say there is no change in parking and therefore it could go before the board. We have a parking analysis chart that tells what types of gross square footage is applied for retail, for office, et cetera, and that's what we base that on. And that was the whole crux of that whole conversation and discussion, that it wasn't a change in the intensity of use because it went from retail to retail, which was one space for 300 square feet of gross floor area to the same. And that's what was allowed to have it done administratively, so long as there were not more than eight seats. We have since put that particular provision on hold under our proposed zoning amendments that you have, in front of you right now, but that is something I think we need to, to discuss on other sites along, along the avenue and the old village as to, do you want the building inspector to allow uses to occur that are not more intense in terms of parking and do it administratively, which would prevent applicants from going before the planning commissions, zoning boards, but they would have to go to the ARB for changes. It would, it would streamline the process drastically, which, which is one of the questions that was raised to me as to how we could streamline the process for applicants.
Wait, I, I, I don't want to get in a long discussion about that.
Well, and this is a long discussion.
So move on.
Okay.
I'm confused about that.
No, that's, that needs, that's not a five-minute conversation. And I'd love to pursue that further. Parking standard?
We'll have a zoning geeks night if people really want it, can definitely come.
One of the biggest issues, you know, is whether or not we even want a parking standard. In the old zoning laws in the early 70s, we had no parking standard in downtown. Village prospered back in the 70s as well as it did now, probably. Do you want to consider modifying the village to not have a parking standard? It's a question that we throw out to you. And again, this is my comments, it's not necessarily the board's comments. Steve asked me to put together comments that, that I had. It's something to think about in certain districts, do we want parking? And the example I say is that in the downtown central business A1 here on Wheeler, you can't provide parking if you want it to. So why, why have a standard where you can't physically provide it without knocking the building down?
Well, but when somebody builds a building over in Washington that really is going to clog up the streets...
Right, but there, they're knocking buildings down or doing something. Where you're knocking a building down and starting from scratch, obviously you have to provide a park. But if you're taking an existing building and trying to renovate it with a use and you can't provide parking, maybe you could have a parking fee in lieu of or something of that nature to provide something that has recently been talked about by your board. So it's...
I'm sympathetic to that, I just think that when somebody wants to come in and, and, you know, and build above the downtown and, you know, a number of apartments without providing parking, straining the parking resources in the village, I think we, that's, you know, I sort of like to have it there, I'm glad the zoning, but, you know, I obviously take your lead on this, but I just think we have to be careful. I, I actually think towns have the responsibility to support business districts with parking. You know, the businesses build their businesses, town, it's sort of, it's, it's good, it's a symbiotic relationship, I always thought that. When I was back in the planning commission, I thought that. But, you know, if somebody's building something else where they could be building some parking along with it, bigger buildings, bigger uses, I think it's nice to have that someplace in the zone.
To have it. The other section is regarding landfill. Currently, we allow six inches maximum fill on a property, which is a ridiculous standard. I mean, I mean, whereas if you, if you, you can put up to six inches and not have to deal with me. Anything over six inches, you got to notify your neighbors 15 days in advance, you have to come up with an engineered design on fill, et cetera. I mean, there should be some, maybe we should allow up to two feet under the, under the control of my office by, with a certified engineered plan of how it's going to be compacted, how it's going to be rolled and everything. And it may be still involve the neighbors, but I think we should increase that from six to two feet at least. It gives me a little more latitude without trying to cost somebody a lot of money to go through the process of putting a couple of yards of fill in this property without going before the boards.
But doesn't that have to do with water runoff? Isn't that sort of what it's about, neighbors complaining about water runoff?
Well, that is part of the equation when we review it. In other words, what is the runoff? How is any of the runoff maintained on-site, et cetera? But again, that's one of the things you have to review with the stormwater management criteria that's in effect right now, we have to review that. Change in intensity, again, that's something that is a fairly long discussion on, involving the intensity of uses on-site and what we do when the use gets intensified. Do we trigger an automatic approval by the planning commission or a referral, things of that nature. Right-of-way parking is probably just one of the single biggest issues that the board has to wrestle with. If you were to interpret the law literally, you'd probably have a thousand violations in the village right now. And these are not the things that have happened recently, these are things that are here. The village passed laws years ago that's required right-of-way parking to be approved by the planning commission, they gave a 90-day grace period. Nobody came into the board at that time to get the waiver. So as a result, technically, any parking in the village right-of-way, grass area between the street and the property line is technically illegal throughout the entire village. And it's thousands of people, I've brought this up on previous administrations and we need to wrestle with how we deal with it. Flag lots, again, that was taken out when Mr. Henry built his lot over on Dogwood Lane.
What is a flag lot?
Flag lot is a lot that looks like a flag with a small neck and then it branches out.
If you have a big backyard?
Right.
You have a, a long driveway that you can build a house in somebody's backyard.
Well...
Sort of, that's a flag lot.
That's basically...
I mean, the way it typically appears is when somebody builds a house behind another house.
Behind another house. Now, most towns allow that type of facility to be occurred, particularly Bedford, Chappaqua, but again...
They have huge lots.
Yeah, I was just saying, aren't they turned up to like 20 acres?
Well, there are some bigger lots and again, that's one of the biggest issue is if you have larger-sized lots, say triple R zoning lots, Ashland, Nanny Hagan, some of those areas there, they have the 21,000 and up, maybe you should consider it because there's a lot of landlocked lots, like Bernice Hunter's property on the corner there and those kind of things. So, I mean, those are things that are, that are going to come up with a lot of applicants shortly. Wetlands map, I know we have a wetlands board, but I believe we need to do some active improvements and get this wetlands map up and running. It's been putzing around for years and we still don't have a wetlands map. And we have no wetlands map that we could rely on to refer to that say you're in a local wetlands, other than the FEMA maps. So I know I did...
And how old are the FEMA maps?
FEMA maps are recently redone, they were previously in 79 and we just had a new set of FEMA maps, I think last year, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought the county had this...
That is correct.
But doesn't the county have...
The county's Southern Water Board map, local wetlands, but you have to designate them.
Right, they're not the same, the FEMA maps are not necessarily the wetlands map. It's, you know, there's soils characteristics you have to go by, but we don't even have a map to say that this house is in a wetland, so...
And who generates that? Do we do that?
Conservation Advisory Council.
And would that require a consultant contract to make that happen?
It, it may, I know Tom Daniels has done a lot of hard work on this, they got a lot of facts. So, I mean, it may be something that we could, you know, see where he stands with it, you may want to get that board before the, our board to see what's going on. Parking commercials and parking lots, we need to discuss how we want to handle that in terms of violations and how it should be done. One of the biggest problems I have is when you have, for example, commercial parking lots that are used as parking lots, but not for commercial, but not for passenger vehicles, but for just vehicles, there's no enforcement policies written out in the zoning, other than trying to bring them back before the planning commission, which is fruitless because if they're not going to...
Like the business on Mobile Avenue?
That's where I'm leading to.
Yeah.
And, and it's, there's nothing in the code to, to go after them on that. So it's very difficult, other than, you know, trying to just go, go through a process of bringing them before planning board, trying to negotiate with them.
That is really ugly.
And I think we need to come up with some, maybe some more teeth in the zoning law as to how we could go after and lay out some enforcement procedures for site plan violations. Outdoor cafes, one of, for example, most of the villages that serve food in a village are allowed to have outdoor cafes on village sidewalks. But we forgot about all of the commercial establishments that have big restaurants, for example, the old Solaluna, Jesse's Villa or something, that are beautiful places that can't have an outdoor cafe because they don't have sidewalk. So it...
We don't allow an outdoor cafe?
Not unless it's on a sidewalk.
Oh.
So what I was suggesting is that maybe we should consider allowing outdoor cafes, it's a really neat ambiance, I think, in the village, on sites that want to put it on their own site with whatever...
If it's not on a sidewalk, it has to have a sidewalk. Because like Iron Horse has...
Well, that's different, that's parkland owned by the village. The sidewalks along Wheeler would be a prime example, those are little Ron Rose pop shop, et cetera, they have two or three tables.
Right.
They have sidewalk, there's criteria in the sidewalk cafe law, it needs a certain distance from the building to the curb line, nine feet, and you need a three-foot walkway. So as long as they met that and designed an area that was part of maybe a site plan amendment, I think we should allow it, but right now...
Who else, aside from Solaluna, though, I'm trying to think, who else would apply to?
Did Solaluna ask for it?
They have, yeah. Well, Jesse's Villa has.
And have we had to deny them?
I had to deny them, yeah.
So is that something that in the near term could come to us as some sort of a waiver?
Not to your board, it would be to the planning commission and the zoning board probably for a...
That's a shame, that would be nice.
And if we could do it administratively by just tweaking the law, it would, when we do these rewrites, maybe it's something we should consider.
I just hate, in a circumstance like Jesse's Villa, which sounds, without knowing the details of it, on the surface, like a reasonable request, is there some means by which we can get them through that process short of the rewrite of all of it?
Give them a waiver for the season or something?
No, not the way the current law is written.
All right, but they could go to planning's own.
They could go to planning's own. Right, right at this stage, yes, they are aware of that.
Food there is so good, too.
Building coverage definition should not be able to be manipulated. And let me explain that. If you use the, the 98 Washington Avenue, which is the Apolito property that we talked about earlier, they have a big donut hole in the middle of the building. And they purposely cut that donut out so that it was not included in the coverage. And as a result, it made the 80% coverage. So they cut a 20% donut out of the site. So what happens is, it manipulated the zoning to satisfy a need. And as a result, I think it wound up being a poorer-designed building because now we don't have a roof above it, it's open to inclement weather and it's a disaster. So I think what we should do is tighten that up so that we don't let that occur again.
I agree.
Building height, right now we have a standard that height is measured five feet from the foundation corners of the building, of a, of a foundation. So they can manipulate that by building a small little retaining wall around the property, five feet away, and that would be then your building height, and then the property could just drop off or whatever the case may be. So, you know, we may want to consider how we actually interpret height in the future. Personal services, we clearly need, we rely on this way too many times in the zoning to what a personal service is, but we need to include certain, expand on the variety of uses that are going to be allowed in the zoning law. Try to list as many as we can, I know it's, it's, a lot of, there's a different school of thought on that, but I think we should add to the list of permitted uses and just try to list as many as you can and whatever we forget would be a list that we just addressed. Wholesale definition and allowance for retail activity should be broken down so they don't use the retail area as a principal use. In other words, there's some businesses that a 10% retail, which is allowed under a wholesale operation, could actually be so busy that it dwarfs the wholesale operation, which is 90%. A good-quality bakery, for example, I mean, you could be busier selling out of that little 10% of the, of the floor area than the whole warehouse facility is. So it's something we need to consider. It could be, the accessory use could be a primary use, depending on the, the, the way the guy prospers or not. Buffering and expanding the list throughout the zoning, we just need to just expand our list of zoning so that there's less room for interpretation. Home occupational uses within the village, I think it's one of the issues we need to address concerning parking impacts to surrounding residential properties. They could have a potential impact on, on adjacent residences if you have a dentist, a doctor, lawyer on a residential piece and it was a very successful operation. We need to make sure that there are tree criteria, planting criteria, buffering standards so that the neighbors that are immediate, adjacent to these areas aren't impacted as much. We have made some progress by eliminating the employee requirement to one, so hopefully in the future that could be maybe tweaked up a little bit, too. It seems to work well. I previously mentioned the site plan issue. Separation distances for zoning ordinance, as I think we need to talk about property corners and try to, in the new law, we were trying to keep a distance separation from a use, like 50 feet from a, from a corner for these uses. Where is it measured, though? Is it measured from the tenant separation from the tenant wall or is it measured from the building owner? There's a, I mean, you could have a building owner that owns the entire corner, but the tenant, maybe two or three tenants in. So I think it needs to be measured from the tenant space, the edge of tenant space and taken from that, from that number. And lastly, I think one of the biggest items we need to consider is allowing the Architecture Review Board to have a little more authority with regards to input in conjunction with their site plan review. Right now, we're working with the board to try to work approvals concurrently so that they are, get feedback from the ARB, but I think we have the opportunity now, our board is very strong in the Architecture Review Board, and it's something that I think that in future projects, that the board can have a very big impact on design, on maybe on informal, informal submission basis, where the applicant goes before the ARB before they even go to the planning commission, just to get some feedback or something, just to get them involved in the process a little earlier. And I think it's something that, I think our current chairman there is certainly up to the task. And in conclusion, these are just some, not all, of the comments that I have on the zoning and I know the zoning task force is putting together a lot of others, but these are common and immediate things that I just had in my office.
Real quick, Mike, 25 words to listen to sign law, where that stands?
Sign law is currently approved. There's been no changes proposed to the sign law. It was taken out of the zoning law years back. My opinion on the sign law, are you looking for an opinion?
Well, I, you know, I don't...
He has a bone to pick, I think.
No, no, all I'm saying is, you know, there are a lot of signs, illegal signs that were illegal five years ago and still legal today, and I just wondered, you know, are we progressing in some way to...
As far as enforcement, I think we need to, we can, we can do better on that for sure. And that's, that's one of the things I could start with our code officer on, trying to get that going into that.
Well, I, I think, I mean, there are some enforcement issues that are obvious, but I also think that there are some issues, including that sunset provision that exists in the previous code that we have not pursued because we recognize there were flaws in the code and I think the time has come to revisit that. I know Bjorn Slate and the rest of his colleagues on the ARB feel strongly that the code ought to be redrafted and that it's, at minimum, way longer and more clumsy than it needs to be and harder to sort of divine the real meaning, so. In addition to which, the other piece of it is that the code kind of anticipates a bunch of lightbox signs and doesn't really leave enough running room for some other interesting kinds of things.
And I think we're changing our direction away from the lightbox-type signs and more decorative signs, more sculptured signs, maybe wood carving-type signs. So the board has got some unique sign applications before their, them in the last couple of months, which really you wouldn't have thought of before, which makes it interesting.
I'm, you know, it's not that I want greater enforcement right now, I, I think I agree with the mayor that we should take, and Bjorn, that we should really try to take another look at it, let's, let's roll it out, see where the weaknesses are, weaknesses are, let's rewrite it if that's what we have to do. I remember, wasn't it Yorktown Heights who had a, their, much of their law was visual, they had illustrations, you know, wasn't that what that was?
Yes.
And if we could, if we could generate something like that, Peter, you said years ago that Cambridge's sign law was a third the length of ours.
I mean, we have a lot of sign law data that is in, you know, in file as far as references to signs, you know, architectural communities, historic communities. It really depends on, it's a whole series of topics, the conversations, Brian, as to, we got to determine what we actually want for different areas.
Right, well, I think we got to get something going on.
Yes, I agree, that's, just noted that as a priority, so.
Bravo, Mike.
Thank you.
Bravo, thank you, really much appreciated.
Thank you, yes. You did a really great job and very appreciated.
Among other things, it's apparent what a village gains when you have a longstanding department head like Mike Testa, who, who brings years of experience to bear, not only general experience, but specific experience about how our code has worked and how it hasn't, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Recognize also, for those who are watching, that Mike is a guy whose job leaves him here late at night a few times a month already, and we appreciate his willingness to come back again, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. So be more than happy to get people's comments over time, but that, although it's a lot to listen to, is, is one of the means by which we hope the board and the community at large have opportunities really to understand what's going on, on in the village and what's going on for, for each of our departments, so. Anybody else have any further comment before we go to the resolutions?
Yes.
I don't know.
All right, to the resolutions. Mindy, 112.
Resolved that the pre-check register dated June 8th, 2009, covering check numbers 63531 through 63670, has been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below. The general fund, $254,517.72. The water fund, $18,177.78. The capital fund, $72,352.50. The refuge fund, $10,249.15. The pool fund, $3,783.76. And the trust and agency fund, $214.50, totaling $359,285.41.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, resolved that the board trustees have reviewed the minutes of the meetings held on Monday, May 18th and May 29th, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, corrections?
Grace Bear spells her name another way on the bottom of first page.
I'll check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Result that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby accepts the following donations: $200 from the Jacob Burns Film Center and Media Arts Lab to the Beautification Committee Fund, and $150 from Aviation and Travel to the Beautification Committee Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is much appreciated. Thank you to the Jacob Burns and also to the travel agency Aviation and Travel, which is on Wheeler Avenue, for their contributions to the Beautification Committee Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Jonathan.
No, it's me.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves an amendment changing the payment factor adjustment to the 2008-2009 Snow and Ice Agreement with New York State Department of Transportation, as per the terms set forth in their memo dated May 12, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to explain this?
Yeah, it's a little confusing, but what-
A little?
What we do is we enter into typically a four-year agreement with New York State DOT for snow and ice removal on the state highways within the village, that's Route 141 and Route 117, Manville Road and Broadway. And in consideration of our services, the state pays us a fixed amount every year. They've made an adjustment, it seems to be due to perhaps the cost of, sometimes it's salt or sometimes it's just a CPI adjustment that the contract allows for. So they're, they're making an index adjustment here and-
Up or down?
Up. They'd be giving us more money.
So the bottom, the bottom line is, on an annual basis, we get what, about $32,000? Is that what I'm reading?
That's, that's what we are expected to get for '08-'09, based on last year's activity.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You know, it was hard to tell if it was up or down.
Yeah, it was.
I read that, and I still, I'm going back to read it, and I still can't get it.
To write such a-
So I'm just trusting you, Patty, that-
Beautifully written letter that is so hard to understand.
It's very annoying.
Jonathan.
Resolve that the board trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to engage PERMA for workman's compensation insurance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, this is good news.
This, well, it's interesting news, and we've, we've been with the Workers' Comp Alliance for many years. They provide workers' compensation insurance for the village for all of our employees except police, who are under 207(c) provisions under the law. And back in February, I went out for other quotes for this type of insurance after getting a budget estimate from our current carrier, and we actually was able to get a quote from PERMA, which is a very well-reputed public employee, employer-sponsored-
And we used to have PERMA years back, and Mike-
We did, yeah, we had them, we left them, you know, this type of insurance, it should be bid, you know, periodically, just to test the market. And we're actually going to save, I think the estimate's $30,000 for what we budgeted this year, so I'm very happy to report that. Looks like we'll be our same.
That's great. So, so our new, our new total cost for workers' comp is going to be $148,974.
Right.
That compared to the renewal quote of $160,753 that we are now not accepting, so.
Right.
It's great. Thank you for doing it.
Good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Right. Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the proposal with Nikon security systems for a fire alarm system at 359 Bedford Road, the rec center, at a cost of $1,735, as per the terms set forth in their proposal letter dated May 27, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is our effort to properly reactivate the fire alarm system in the old rec center, which is currently vacant. Wanted to be sure we had a proper fire alarm system there, and when we reactivated it, it turned out, as I know from having gotten the phone call in the middle of the night-
Thank you.
-that it doesn't work properly, and Nikon fire alarm system came in and indicated, determined that the heads need to be replaced and a number of things need to happen for All in favor?
This is, this is something that we need to do with a building that's vacant?
Well, the issue is that in the absence of a security system, we would have no means of early warning that something had caught on fire.
Oh, so the system doesn't work at all?
Does not work at all.
No, it hadn't worked.
When they turned it on, it, it's okay when they turn it on, but it's, it produced false alarms first night, in the middle of the night, and then several times a day following, so.
Gotcha. ADP can't, I mean, I have a, I, I'm not going to argue, I mean, I'm not going to, I get home fire alarm systems for free, as long as you sign up for monitoring. There's nothing we can, I mean, we have to spend $1,735 for something that all of us can get for free, as long as we sign up for monitoring?
It's a repair of our current.
Well, what do we need, my question is, do we need a Cadillac in there right now?
I don't, I don't know that it's a Cadillac. This is not your average building. You know, they have to get way high up in order to accommodate.
There's also a problem that it's not monitored by telephone, because we don't have any phone lines in the building anymore, so this is a radio-controlled system. Now, it's done over radio wave.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whereas the village board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, the village proposes to undertake the installation of a traffic signal and related streetscape improvements at the intersection of Bedford Road and Pleasantville Road, at intersections at Marvel Avenue and Wheeler Avenue on Bedford Road in the Village of Pleasantville. Whereas pursuant to Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, as amended, known as the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECPRA, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, being 6 NYCRR, New York State, New York Code of Rules and Regulations, Part 617, as amended, the village desires to comply with SECPRA and the regulations with respect to the project. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, hereby determines that the project constitutes a Type II action, which under SECPRA and the regulation in particle or article?
In particular.
In particular, thank you. Six, it wasn't, it wasn't making sense. In partic, in particular, 6 NYCRR, Section 617.5(c)(16) will not have a significant effect on the environment. Accordingly, no further action under SECPRA is required.
Oh, that's good.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to?
We are required to review the project from an environmental impact point of view, and the only thing that's changing at that intersection is the installation of a traffic signal where there is none. There's no expansion of roadway. In fact, when we had done the traffic analysis, it was clear that by installing the traffic signal, we actually will reduce the, mitigate traffic impacts that occur now from cars queuing and, and trying to access the corridor from different directions. So we're comfortable in determining this as a Type II action with no environmental impact. Actually, it will be a betterment when the project is done.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. 119. Jonathan.
Whereas sealed bids were advertised in the official village newspaper and received on April 3rd, 2009, for Bedford and Pleasantville Road streetscapes improvements, and whereas the bids were received as per the following, and reviewed by Anthony Zano, Director of Design of Westchester County Department of Planning, as follows: The bidders included contact construction for $626,135.78, Palladino Concrete Creations, $631,247.40, Peter Landy, $687,450.50, Vernon Hills, $727,304, Jupco Site Development, $762,298.90, Bradher Site Construction, $819,894, Balai Construction, $888,365, JVD Industries, $1,017,674, and Enterprise Inc., coming in at $1,118,800. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville upon the recommendation of Anthony Zano, Director of Design, Westchester County Department of Planning, hereby awards the bid for Bedford and Pleasantville Road Streetscapes Improvement to Contact Construction, 28 Lakeview Drive, Yorktown Heights, New York, 10598, in the amount of $626,135.78. Sid Award is subject to review of contract references by the village attorney and a receipt in review of performance, payment bonds, and certificate, insurance certificates.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the award of a bid for a project we've talked about at various points before, and that is a substantial redesign of the intersection at, at the point where Bedford Road curves in front of Look Oil and heads out towards Pace. We're going to reconfigure that in per design that was generated by the RBA group, our traffic consultants, and then later substantially improved and developed by the Westchester County Planning Department. And it will, among other things, introduce a traffic signal at that location, but it will also dramatically improve the pedestrian conditions in that area, establishing much better walkways. And by the report of the traffic engineers, although we will add an additional traffic light, that traffic light and the lights further to the east, I guess, at, at Bedford Road and Marvel Avenue, and also Bedford Road and Wheeler Avenue, will be synchronized together, and the analysis suggests that the traffic throughput, as they call it, will actually increase.
And, yeah, and there's one more component that's very significant. We will be getting a walk cycle from this project, right outside the corner here by John Jock's. We'll have a pedestrian walk cycle, which we don't have now.
Which is great, because that has been an ongoing-
It's very difficult for people to figure out.
Very difficult, yes.
So I'm excited about that.
Wait, with the time?
It would have the countdown?
Yeah, the countdown.
Yeah, countdown signals and-
So that's what we're buying for the $626,000, all of these physical improvements, right?
That's right.
Yep.
Well, and the other good, good news about this is that half the money-
I can show you some pictures.
Half the money for this has come to us from the county in the form of a community development block grant, so the village's contribution to this was only, what, in the neighborhood of $300?
$350,000.
$350,000. We have a call? Village Hall? All right. Shall I just report that on the air, or would you like to have the microphone for? I shall. Okay. Right. That call was Dorothy Dushen, who's a longtime village resident and a person with a lot of interest in civic affairs. She says to Patty heartfelt thanks that the walk signal, the walk cycle-
You're welcome.
Outside John Jock is-
That's very nice.
That's a lot of my comment.
That was nice.
Thank you, Dorothy, not only for the call, but for proof positive-
Your dedicated viewership.
That you're still watching.
Yes. Quarter of 10.
So.
She should have given us the Yankee score.
Much appreciated.
Well, you know, a lot of seniors try to get to key food. It's very difficult.
No, it's very hard.
Well, and recognize, you know, for a lot of people who don't live in that area, the pedestrian conditions are extremely difficult.
They are.
This is going to be an awful lot better, so. And as I was saying before the phone rang, the, half the cost has been borne by a county grant, in the form of a community development, development block grant. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Right.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, based on the recommendation of the police chief, hereby approves Elizabeth L. Lane for an unpaid internship at the Pleasantville Police Department, beginning June 10th, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you to the police chief. For those who may not know, the chief actually teaches a couple of courses at Pace University, and therefore often comes into contact with students who are interested in, in internships, and it has benefited our department over a period of many years, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Mindy.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendments: Amount of 100, pardon me, $893 from the special event overtime to special event outside services. The amount of $7,830 from pool contingency to pool repair and maintenance, $1,957 from pool unallocated insurance, is that right?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
To pool part-time, $179 from pool-
Same thing.
Unallocate, okay, sorry. Little spelling error. Insurance to social security, and $19 from pool unallocated insurance to pool Medicare, totaling $10,878. Also, the amount to increase, $185 from the, I guess that's from Jacob Burns-
Jacob Burns.
It should be film, is it Media Center or Jacob Burns Film Center miscellaneous-
Revenue.
Review-
Revenue.
Revenue, pardon me, to the Jacob Burns Film Center School Crossing Guard part-time.
Is there a second?
Second.
So these are cleaning up last, the last fiscal year, which just ended May 31, so that accounts that are over expended are funded with accounts that are under expended, with the single exception of the last item, which was an additional $185 in revenue from the Jacob Burns Film Center, to pay for an additional $185 in cost for the crossing guard that we had on Grant Street during the time period of their construction, which they were responsible for paying for, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. I'll, I'll take this one, motion 122. Whereas the general fund was refunded escrow funds from prior years and fiscal year end 2008-9, and whereas the parking revenues exceeded the fiscal year 2008-9 budget amounts, and whereas these funds became part of the fiscal year 8-9 revenue stream that contributed to an increase in the village's general fund balance, now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby appropriates $150,000 from the general fund fund balance to the capital reserve for economic development purposes, established on April 27, 2009 by resolution number 200981. Is there a second?
Second.
So those of you who watched the meeting of April 27, or, or have followed it in its press accounts, we established at that meeting a fund that would be used for downtown improvements, the notion being that when we found opportunities to do so, we would transfer money into a fund that could then be dedicated to the purpose of downtown improvements. The fund description is written rather broadly, so that this and future boards would have quite a bit of flexibility in how to use that, but the near-term discussion has been about the notion of parking improvements. And one of the notions behind this has been the thought that we have a substantial revenue stream in parking-related fees and permits, and that some piece of that could be identified as a revenue stream going into this fund to fund future parking developments. So is there comment and discussion on this front?
Yeah, I do. And first, let me thank the board for, this was on for a day that I wasn't going to be here, so I want to acknowledge the board's willingness to give me the opportunity to talk about this. There was some discussion about whether this is the same topic as we talked about before. I think that the capital, the, whatever the balance to Capital Reserve Economic Development Fund is a different conversation than actually how we're going to fund it. We're funding this with $150,000 of money that came from escrow accounts that were developed, or were established years ago to pay for consulting and engineering work that's done in connection with applicants that go before the board, the board of, the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. These are funds that were to be designated specifically for those projects. What happened was back many, before I was on the board, those funds were not used. Taxpayers' money were used to pay for those bills. Those funds remained in escrow and were never released, and my feeling is that this is $150,000 of taxpayers' money. We should give it back to the taxpayer. It is, and my thought is that we either put it into a separate account, designated to go back to the taxpayer at the budget process of next year. It'll reduce your taxes by one and a quarter percent, assuming that we're still around $12 million, off whatever rate that we have as increased for next year. This is particularly a time that I think we, we shouldn't be throwing $150,000 around lightly. There's a number of things that are coming up next year that we know about. One of the frustrations of municipal budgeting is that it tends to be myopic, it tends to look sort of just at currently where we're at, as opposed to looking out. I, I understand that perhaps one of the arguments for this particular fund is that indeed it addresses that. However, as we've discussed about before, and I won't go into a lot of detail, because I have already, we already have a means for addressing that, but next year, we've got pension fund contributions, by our best estimates, we are going to increase probably significantly. to increase probably significantly. We've delayed garbage trucks, of which Steve Johnson was here today begging for at least one, which is about $200,000. We've delayed police cars. We've got a rec department that we don't know what's going on with, but certainly is probably going to cost us, starting today, with $1,735 and who knows what into the future. We have taxer chiores, which are of a very large amount. We don't know the amount, and I'm not throwing it out there to create a, a sense of overdramatism, dramatics of, of the situation, but certainly they are large, and the potential of having to meet those are great. And so to reserve $150,000 into this fund, I think that we should actually reserve it in a fund to give it back to the taxpayers to reduce the impact of next year's taxes. Which, you know, looking at it today, whether it turns out to be the case or not, certainly looks like the odds are stacked. It's going to be higher than the, the 2.4% increase that we had this year. And certainly, we could all use the refund. When we were talking about this fund, and Peter brought it up, I thought the thought was we were going to fund it modestly with $30,000, or, I mean, there were some numbers kicked around. I don't want to put numbers out there that may be wrong, but certainly the thought was a modest contribution, not $150,000. I think it's, I think it's too much. I think it's, I think it's, we're not quite sure how this is going to work. And I think it's coming at a bad time, a potential bad time for the village, where this, this money, if it's, you know, available next year, we can fund it again. And quite frankly, again, I'm not sure what problems that we're trying to solve with this fund. I am of the opinion that if we have a problem, let's talk about it and let's fix it, as opposed to, you know, some ethereal fund that addresses some potential future problems, which may or may not manifest themselves. So, I try to be brief, because I don't want to, well, it's hard for me to be brief. Anybody that's known, watched this for six years, but I'm trying not to go over arguments that we've had before. I think the $150,000 is too much. I think it's better used somewhere else, and I think, quite frankly, it was your money to begin with. It wasn't spent properly. We spent your money when we should have spent, we spent our money, actually, when we should have spent other people's money who actually had projects. We gave them a loan, in essence, and it's time for us to get our loan back. And I'd like to see that money come back to us.
Peter, we have eight minutes left of the tape.
Okay.
Is it a good time to change it?
Sure. We, we need to stop for a moment while Shane changes the tape, so we don't miss any of the meeting, and then we'll come back. We're back. Sorry for that brief delay, but we were about to run out of the tape that records the meeting, and so we're back again. I just had a few comments to respond to Jonathan's points, which I, I respect and appreciate. The first is to say that I think all of us, and I certainly would count myself as a fiscal conservative, as far as the village council concerned, and indeed, I think in, in almost all circumstances, Jonathan and I have agreed on, on that, this happens to be one circumstance where we disagree. The discussion we've had over a period of years is the question of whether the, the monies that are generated by parking fees and by parking fines could in part be identified as a means by which we address long-term parking problems. Some have argued that we don't have a parking problem. I both live here and I work here, and I can assert to you that at various times in the day, we do have a parking problem. And I can also tell you, as a, as a business owner here, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and a person who talks to business owners and potential developers here on a daily basis, that the parking issues that we confront are a significant constraint going forward to building the commercial tax base, which I personally believe is, is the only salvation we will have in terms of improving our, our overall tax burden on the residential property owner. So Jonathan's quite right. The discussion that we had had originally was the notion of taking something like $50,000 a year out of the roughly $600,000 in parking-related revenues that we generate, and recognize that is not tax money. That's not money that was raised by taxes. Those are fees and fines that people are charged for parking here. So that we would take something like, what, $50,000 out of 600, a little less than 10% of the total parking revenues, and identify a number like that as a revenue stream that we could feed into a, into a parking or downtown improvements fund. And although it's a small amount of money, it's enough money to fund in part a fairly significant bond, and would give us the running room to start to think in a, in a very directed way about what steps we could take to invest in improved parking conditions in the village. The reason the number you see before you sit down on this resolution is $150,000 and not 50, is that as Jonathan indicated, we had a bookkeeping transaction that took place about a month ago, that identified about $150,000 in escrow monies that, as Jonathan indicated, had been collected from residents for paying planning and zoning expenses, and those expenses had been paid out of the general fund, not of the escrow. So that all happened five, six, seven, eight years ago, over a period of time. And so we were confronted with a bookkeeping transaction that in essence produced $150,000 of unexpected money that goes into our fund balance, which is in essence our savings account, our piggy bank, so to speak. The village is in an extremely strong financial position. Our fund balance, as of the moment, is approximately $3 million. Am I correct in saying that, Patty? And that approximately $3 million, based on our overall general fund operating fund of between 12 and 13 million dollars, is not only a very healthy circumstance, but bordering on an unreasonably high fund balance, as far as, you know, sort of traditional averages have been concerned. So as a result of that, we are in the fortunate position, and all of us as residents are in the fortunate position, that we are extremely well-positioned to weather what may come our way in the next year or two. And of course, we don't know what's going to happen in the economy, but Jonathan is quite right, that the biggest storm cloud on our horizon is the likely impact of the revised contribution we're required to make to the state pension funds. If the state comptroller's comments in the last couple of weeks are correct, it may be that our contribution, our required contribution to the, to the pension funds run by the state may rise from 6% of payroll, which is the approximate number we have right now, to something like 11% of payroll. And if that were to happen, that would have an impact on our annual fund, our general fund budget of somewhere in the neighborhood of between $400,000 and $500,000 in new expense to us. So that is a significant problem. It's a problem we confronted about six years ago. And that problem, when we confronted it about six years ago, an unexpected spike in pension funds, produced the only double-digit tax increase this village has, has seen on the village side in, in memory. So I, I am extremely mindful of the storm clouds we confront. I disagree with a couple of points Jonathan made, one of which is the notion of garbage trucks, and, and that is a decision we'll have to make. But when we make that decision, it doesn't affect the general fund, doesn't affect the $150,000 we're looking at right now, because the refuse fund operates as a separate fund and, and is, is its own budget. So the issue we, as a group in work session discussed, was the notion of taking from the $150,000, in essence, windfall money, money we didn't know we had, and using $100,000 of it, in essence, to prime the pump of this new economic development downtown fund. In other words, be able to put us in a little more flush position in that fund, and to be able to move forward sooner. And when I say sooner, I hope that we can be, start looking at ways to, to implement these improvements within the next year. I don't mean to suggest the shovels in the ground the next year, but I can tell you that I've sat on this board now for seven years. I'm in the eighth year. Parking has been a constant source of trouble. My previous tenure on the planning commission was largely consumed by discussion about parking, and I can tell you that parking variances are a longstanding problem, also with the zoning board. So thousands upon thousands upon thousands of hours have been spent addressing the question of, how do we let more economic development in this community? Where do people park? How do we deal with the fallout? These are difficult times in which to make positive changes like that, especially when you start talking about changes that are going to have a cost impact, and that cost impact clearly needs to be borne in a variety of ways. But one of the ways in which we can bear it and move forward and see the kinds of improvements that will in the end allow the downtown to prosper, in my view, is to identify some of the revenues we're now creating through parking fees, and hand it over to a parking fund. So, recognize that we were listed in Westchester Magazine around Christmas time as one of the top 10 worst places to park in Pleasantville because of the issue of parking violations and the likelihood of getting a ticket. And one piece of that problem, in my opinion, is that we haven't had a long-term solution to try to deal with the parking constraints, and too many people are ending up funding the general purposes of government through parking tickets. So I feel strongly that this is a reasonable step to take. I think that in the end, this $150,000 contribution to this fund will have to be revisited annually by this board and by future boards, about what kind of revenue stream we can fund it with in the future. And if we find ourselves sailing into economic headwinds, there will doubtless be times when funding this will be difficult to do. This happens to be a circumstance when we have an opportunity that I'd like to see us seize, recognizing that we carry into whatever comes next year, a $3 million fund balance, which is borderline too high to be sustained. That is taxpayer money, and we give back some of that money annually. This year's budget that we just finished identified $650,000 in money to be drawn out of the fund balance. Blessedly, our circumstances ended up a little better than that, and I think in the end we're only, are going to use up about 400 and some thousand of that. But what happened this fiscal year that ended just last week is that we returned to the taxpayer between $400,000 and $500,000 of money we had collected in the past and hadn't spent. So, you know, we're clearly focused on that issue. I think every day, all day, about the means by which we can lessen the burden on everybody with taxes. And honestly, I think that the only real long-term solution is going to be some economic development that brings some more people to help shoulder the burden, and I view this as a flag in the ground that says we're serious about making that happen. So, anybody else have anything to say?
No.
I would just add, Peter, that, you know, some towns, in some towns, businesses form BIDs, Business Improvement Districts, and for whatever reason, in this town, and I'm a business owner downtown myself, as are you, Peter, you know, the, who knows why, but, but the business, businesses here, especially in this economy, are not, you know, they're not driving up in Hummers and Cadillacs. People are working really hard to maintain the downtown. Businesses here are just overwhelmingly owned by good, hard-working people who believe in Pleasantville. To the extent that they can contribute to a BID, that's, that's been a little iffy in the past. This is sort of a de facto way to, to, in this user tax, which is parking meter fees, it's a way for people from out of town, our customers who come, who come in, it's a way for them to contribute to our economic development. I understand exactly what Jonathan's saying, and I certainly sympathize with a lot of your points. But, but I, I personally like the idea of saying to my customers who come in, and the last time they saw me, they got a $15 ticket. I can say, you know, when you, when you put money in that meter, it's going to alleviate the problems that you face when you come and see me. It's, it's going to improve the Village of Pleasantville. So I think it's, it's a neat solution. I understand, Jonathan, what you're saying. I'm certainly not one to raise taxes. I don't think anybody, over the years I've been on this board, can accuse me of wanting to raise taxes. I remember one year, I was in favor of a 0% tax increase, and I think I was voted down because, you know, we wanted to show, it was, you know, we wanted to show something. It was one of our low-tax years. I have fought for, you know, if there's $150 we're wasting, I'm all over that. So I just think that this is a good idea, and I think this signals that we're looking in the right direction in the village.
Well, I mean, I, I hear you. You want to designate the, the parking fee as non-tax and the tax collection as tax.
No, it's revenue, it's revenue.
But the reality, from the, from everybody who pays taxes, it's the same thing. We could put this $150,000 in some sort of tax assessment fund or something, and guarantee people we're going to reduce their taxes by one and a quarter percent next year off whatever increase we have to hit them with. And, you know, or we can put it in this fund, in which case we don't reduce their taxes by one and a quarter percent. So, you know, it all gets mixed into the same bowl, and as a result, from the taxpayer's standpoint, me being a taxpayer, so I'll just say me, I don't see a difference between a fee that we generate or a tax that we generate, because if you take one away, my taxes go up. And that's what's going on here.
With, with all due respect, I think now we're back into the same circular argument that we, we were in before.
Just pointing out, I, I...
And I understand, I, I get where you are. You get where, where some of us are on the board. So with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I would call the question.
Let me just, I just wanted to say one thing, and that is, I don't think in the end, it's going to be healthy for our downtown economic future to, to fund in any significant part the general purposes of government through parking violations. And at the moment, we're generating several hundred thousand dollars a year in parking violations, and it's coming back to bite us. So we need to wean ourselves from that as a primary means of revenue. You know, this is not, you know, podunk town where, where you can get the out-of-towners for an expensive parking ticket, or an expensive speeding ticket, and fund the purposes of government. We're in a, we've got ourselves in a bind at the moment, where we're doing enforcement as we need to do it, but it's, it's coming back to bite us, because too many people are saying, too easy to get a ticket in this town. So, and my last point is, in the end, we are confronted with the same sort of decision that, that every board is confronted with, and that is, at what point do we say we're going to have to take some steps to make a long-term improvement? It's always difficult to do it in any given year. In any given year, you could always say, I'm not going to take this $150,000, I'm going to return that to the general fund. But that's a come, that's a decision that we've made an awful lot of times for entirely justifiable reasons, and as a result of that, we're still talking about the problems we were talking about 10 years ago, so...
So, I mean, and, and we can end it on this. Why don't we just have a real discussion with the community about actually constructing a parking garage in coordination with Lucy's Construction there, and solve the problem, which is apparently really holding us back, right?
It hasn't been determined if a parking garage is an answer to the question, Jonathan.
I mean, I really do intend to have that discussion about how to address this, but I also really do think that the funding for it is going to have to come from several sources, and one source of that funding from several is going to have to be the fees we charge for parking. And, and as you recall, we doubled the parking meter fees a couple of years ago, generated $80,000 of new income, and it gets sucked up into the general fund for perfectly understandable reasons, again, but it's funding the general purposes of government and not getting at the problem we talk about. So I'm simply hoping that this is a means by which, in a managed...
And I was opposed to that parking meter increase, you'll remember. You were in favor of it, and I was opposed to it, because I thought it, I thought it was...
Well, I was opposed to it as well. I was willing, long story. We don't need to go into it.
Right, we don't have to, right.
Bottom line is...
Let's vote.
Enough said. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion approved. Jonathan, 123.
The Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Guyan Street residents to hold block party on June 28, 2009, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
More power to you, Guyan Street. I think you are the first out of the blocks for the seasonal block party.
Really, that's so true.
And some special award should be made for, for the season, so...
This is graduation weekend, too. They're really gutsy. They must have no graduates on that block.
All right, if you've stuck with us, you are to be complimented. It's been a long meeting, but I hope one that was illuminating. And a couple of points to remind people of, and one is that the music festival is coming up on Saturday, July 11, and tickets are on sale now. There are a number of places around the village where you can buy them. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rich Sarpity, I see in the back, you can buy them at Coldstone Creamery, you can buy them at Village Hall, you can buy them at the bookstore, you can buy them at Marmalade in Chappaqua...
Yes, I heard, thank you. I think it got installed.
The Dragonfly...
I know, they did not...
Arcadia on Main in Mount Kisco...
Art of Wine.
And the Art of Wine, so...
Is that why you're sitting back there tonight?
I'm being fed my answers there by...
An expensive reminder.
Rich Sarpity. So, at any rate, Pleasantville Music Festival promises to be a great event, Saturday, July 11. Please buy your tickets early at any of those locations. You can also go online at PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com to get more information. There are both individual tickets and affordably priced family packages. Buy early, buy often. And lastly, I just want to remind you that Lou McKinney's speech at the Memorial Day Services is one not to be missed. It's currently playing on PCTV, and also viewable at PCTV76.org. A special occasion from a very special village resident, and I commend it to you. So, thank you all. Unless someone has something to add, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you. We'll return and see you again at our next regular meeting, which is Monday, June 22.